And we are granted the ability to put it in with other administration. And so, we're supposed to put a force. If we don't do a force, then we request to the I C J I to move those around based on the grant requests that we send out. And so, we submitted that because we didn't do exactly what that requirement is. Every year, that's pretty difficult. And so, they grant that request. Every year I've been doing it, and always Molly I've been. So, a little bit of process. We sent the applications out. We got those back. I committed that for, I think, about four hours and divvied it up. This in front of you, it was approved at our CADA board meeting in February. And probably wanted to distribute the money to all the individual that requested it. And so, that's been approved. And so, now we're sharing with you. It's kind of our annual report of where we recommended the distribution of money to come. The claims will be paid later. You guys approve the claims later for the individual checks going out to all the different organizations that you see listed here in front of you. So...
Of the organizations the same as last year? Or is there new ones or other ones that weren't included?
Actually, we had a couple of new ones. Most of them are the same.
Okay.
The Wells County Sheriff Department, those phone cards. I believe that one was new. The Tech Drug Task Force, that one was new. And the Helping Hands one, Helping Hands Pregnancy Center was new as well. And then, oh, and then CADA, the one under Education and the CADA, the same presentation.
Oh.
That one's a new one. So, yes, we did have some, some new applications this year. And then, the other ones are the ones that have been there before.
Sure.
Any questions we can answer for?
Now, do you need a motion of acceptance for this, Mark, to move it forward? Or is this just informational as you do every year? Just more to bring us up to speed?
Right.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Because all those individuals probably have been at the next meeting.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Glenna.
Glenna's next.
Thank you.
I see folks in the back that are straining to hear you, Glenna. You want to pull the microphone closer to you? They want to hear what you're saying. So, that's a good thing.
Our building is 100 feet long.
Is it on?
There you go.
Pop down.
Now it'll work.
Try it.
Just pull that right down to you. There you go. You're gonna be, you're gonna sing for us here in a minute. I know what you're gonna do. I've already done it. I've done mine.
Okay. Our building is 100 feet long and 42 feet wide. The front 50 feet is our storeroom, our store area where we sell, have our clothing racks. The back is our...
Sorting area.
Donation room and sorting room. We are very cramped out there for space. We have a 10-foot overhead door in the back east side. When we open that in the winter, our ladies freeze. When we open it in the summer, we open it to have Goodwill. And that's, we have a truck comes every week from Goodwill to take what we cannot sell here. But when that door is open, our ladies are not very comfortable. So, and we've also got a drainage problem in the back that if it rains, we have standing water, or it backs up into the EMT parking lot, and they can only use about half of their parking lot. So, we have talked to Shaw Excavating to come and alleviate our drainage problem. And we would like to add on to the back 12-foot by the 42-foot area. I have talked to APC, and we do have a 50-foot leadway back there. So, we wouldn't have to go to a variance on the back. You have the plans before you. Because of the back wall, that would make a, like an airlock or something, that when the overhead door is raised, then all the moisture and everything wouldn't come in. Our ladies would be in a separate area.
So, the one section is for the building, and the other section is for the apron or the porch, if you want to call it, or area 15 by 12?
There's two quotes there. When we first started off with this, we were just gonna go with a 12 by 15 area. We really didn't think we could afford more. You don't have a print for that. I apologize. I got lost during the meeting. But then, we can't add on, if we do the smaller one, we can't add on later to it. Because if we would add on later, we'd have to rip off basically the roof and the side and lose our money that we have in the smaller building. So, that's when we decided maybe to go with the larger.
So, it's one or the other, not both?
Yeah.
Twenty-eight thousand?
Right.
Yeah.
And how much would you be requesting?
We'd like fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifteen?
Fifteen. And I saw also, the APC said that we needed a...
Development plan.
Development plan and a drainage plan. And I didn't know if you did that, or if we needed to do that, since it's your building and your land.
Question that I think if you went to APC, that that'd probably be just fine for you guys to go.
That's just to take care of that.
You think? Roy, do you have one? You would know?
I would think it'd probably be the combination, because...
If we approve it, though, I mean, that would give them the authorization to go, would it not?
Yeah. I think that they typically would have a form for the landowner to sign consenting to... It ought to be a combination. I mean, you've investigated and you've gotten the details, and you know what you're doing. The commissioner's owned the building. To further complicate things, the lease expired in 2016. So, probably need a new lease. But the lease requires, if you're going to make an addition, that you have to have written consent over the county.
But then also the drainage, the drainage is not part of the equation. You guys handling the drainage and the connections and retention.
I don't have a problem with the 15,000. It would have to pin the additional appropriation if we would have to go to council with. Because the funding is not there that I'm aware of. So...
We'd have to basically...
So, yeah.
Request Todd and Lightning.
We would ask for additional appropriation of 15,000 in support of your project.
On these estimates, we did ask for four different companies, and we only got estimates back from two. I don't know if that's normal or not.
It happens. I think we're busy.
Extremely busy right now.
One of the other reasons that we're requesting the additional fund to add on to the building is in this main part of the building, the garage doors now that they were talking about, which is our pass-on area. When we empty the bins, especially on the weekends, we have such a large amount of donations right now, that we are filling that entire garage before people come in Monday to work. And then, they have to, it's making it difficult to go through what we can use and where to put it because of the limited space. So, part of the addition would then be the pass-on area.
Right.
Give them this larger area because we don't have right now for incoming donations.
And you're still using the donations to take care of Wells County?
We are.
That's right.
From 1990 to the end of 2016, we've given back in our community over $1,500,000. Not one person is paid for the work that they do. It's 100% volunteer, and donations do go back. So, motion to approve 15,000 pending approval through council.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
And on the development plan, then we'll take care of that ourselves. That and the drainage plan.
Yeah. I think as, as the less seed of property, you've got the property interest and the leases. If you did a new lease, it would say you have the right to make additions and improvements with the consent of the county.
So, you're saying we're carrying a new lease?
I will. I suggest that would be done. I think the last one was signed by Trent.
I don't know.
Is he still here?
Yes, he is.
Yeah. I'll get a hold of Trent and say we need a new lease.
And there wasn't one time we gave a law in the year. But in 2013, when Mr. Mossberg was commissioner, he said we didn't have to do that anymore.
Oh, we did?
But it was legal.
Mr. President, another thought to what we just approved might be an option of just taking it out of ceded. Because I guess the more I think about this, this could be more of an economic development, which does what you put back into the, into Wells County. And that would save, just as a thought, and keep things moving. Nothing against the council, Todd. Just take it off your plate.
He really wanted it.
So, maybe if you would want to...
Okay. I amend my motion to go ahead and approve it. Do you see the funds to do it?
Okay.
And I would second that.
All right. In all favor?
Aye. We just made that go a little faster for you. How's that?
One less done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Sometimes it takes me a while to think. Oh, yeah.
Monthly reports and other articles?
Here are a couple of things here I have. This is the recycle, Wells County, it's all raised, yes. He is requesting to use the parking lot on May the 12th for nine to noon for the trading event. So, we need to have approval, and it requires all security.
So moved.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I do have petition or order to appoint Jeff Freecrible to the Rock Creek Conservancy. They did, the Rock Creek Conservancy Board did put out a advertisement for people to apply for this, and they did not get any more. And Mr. Freecrible was currently on the board and as a director, and they asked him to continue, and as a great to continue, so we're going right into the appointment of time.
Motion to appoint him.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Public hearing? Okay. It's on the agenda with the Regional Sewer District. I'm going to take upon my, take it upon myself that I was in attendance at that meeting. It was an executive session. Therefore, I'm not going to report on the discussion we had, other than, I will say, from a commissioner's standpoint, the more I've been looking into this, and I'm just getting started, so there will not be a lot I can share at this point, other than, the Regional Sewer District was set up for the entire county. Never funded, from the standpoint, it was taken, I believe in 2007 or '08. Previous board-appointed DLZ probably wasn't set up properly. But from where I'm at right now, we have another project that was brought on by IDAM, and we have to address it. I went to a meeting in Indianapolis, and they are currently working, trying to locate funding. What I've found is a lot of people just think a regional sewer district, they get a project done, and it should be entirely funded by a group of homeowners. But the real true regional sewer district is three facets: administrative, then the executive, how it's set up to function, collect money, and then you have the project of pipe to ground, manholes, and things like this. I don't think it would be fair that the Timber Ridge people pay for all of that and try to be responsible for all three facets of that. That's just my opinion, because we know, Marlene's not here from the Health Department, Allison's not here, but we have many other sections in the county that could be identified to be part of the project. So, I'm looking at it from the standpoint that a small portion of money, and when I say small, I'm talking small. I'm not talking 50,000, $100,000, half a million, $10,000. Enough to get the front two items taken care of. So, when it's truly a project, that the people would be paying for the pipe and the ground, and cost of the bond, cost of the product, to hold it and make it happen. But from the administration side, and it might only take a couple of years to get that done, and then it'll be up and running. But out of the gate, I think, I think it would not be fair to the people of Timber Ridge to take care of that entire process. That would then benefit other districts as they're added, or other territories or affected areas. Other than that, I see Leon. I see Lee. I don't see Mike, and I don't see Andy. But if there's any other comments you want to add from the executive session, that's really all.
The only thought I would make with the, from a board perspective, we've learned that Adams County needed, requested, as far as we understand, $100,000 to establish and make their district work. And then, we're gonna be requesting $60,000 each year from council to continue to make their district work. But the bottom line is that without, without dollars in the county, there will be no regional, functioning regional sewer district. It's not gonna happen without some type of input in the county. And that's, I would make that absolutely 100% clear. It's too complicated. It's too big for a volunteer board to make this type of project happen. And at some point, the county's gonna have to realize that. It's either you pay me now or pay me later. And they'll probably pay me a lot more later if we continue to push this down the road.
Right. And I think a lot of this, we're gonna be learning from other districts and territories. And again, Whitley County is about a year behind us. So, they're just getting this whole thing. House Bill 1233 is coming through the State House right now. And it will, where it's set up, to help counties like ours. Whitley County has actually asked me to testify or make a statement in their benefit, or I don't consider it a benefit, because I think the way the rule is set up is to our benefit and would be to anybody's benefit. Because I think if we can have a person that is in a affected area, serve and assist in the decision making in that area, it just makes more sense than people that don't have a clue what's happening inside of this district. And when I say district, I mean say Timber Ridge, not Wells County. But if you have somebody in Timber Ridge, or wherever the next area is, if you have somebody inside that area, have a say, give some direction, garner support from those that live in the area that are gonna be affected. It's gonna be huge. And then negotiations with all the agreements to go with it. So, it just, I mean, the document I sent Roy is like, just the one agreement, I think it's over 30 pages. So, and that's just from Adams County. So, those are the expenses I don't think Timber Ridge residents should have to pay for. To get it started, it should be identified, and then, from there, a project. So, I just, I'll leave it at that. I just don't want to issue much more context of what we discussed in the executive session. The plan was our meeting, the second Monday of April, to have more information?
15th.
15th? Oh, yeah, that's right. Easter is on Monday, so it'd be the third.
That will be a public meeting.
That will be a public meeting, so we can get more information. Hopefully, have more back from Jim McGough at State Building Loan and Vicki Perry at Arkham. So, at this point, that's about the best I can tell you, other than our two and a half hour meeting.
I have a quick question, maybe slightly late. When some of these counties start these, going way back, I know Adams County is starting to put this in. I know when I was in one in LaGrange County, and I don't know how it started. But did these individuals, is it pretty much around the state that the counties contributed right up front, or did they bond that within their group? I don't know if, if the board could bond that to get it started. I, just a question, I don't know.
That's the information we're seeking.
Okay, okay.
And reaching out to other counties that have started it.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I ask a question? Do we have a petition to approve, providing for the formation of the Wells County Regional Sewer District? When was established?
I have documents regarding, it was before I came on county. Actually, the documents were signed by county council and commissioner. But Wells County's was formed as a result of a... Oh, a plan?
Yeah. Because that's part of the petition, was the vision, meaning.
Well, I think the plan I've got's on a CD wrong. I'll be happy to...
But the original, the original document was simply focused on establishing the sewer district and satisfying the plan made on the Kitty Paxton area.
Three orders.
That's the original structure.
I didn't know if there was petition, if there was a plan approved by IDAM. Because usually, the way I understood, there was a process you had to go through to actually put the application in for...
We didn't have an application. We were forced by IDAM to form a regional sewer district.
But formation of, to have a body to, I guess, as far as the...
You're talking about the formation of the RSD, or a plan that they had developed for it?
No, the RSD plan, that's when they petitioned, was there, I don't know if there was...
You led me to believe that seed money was used, and that's kind of out of character. Is that possible, that? Back in '07 and '08, when they started the project?
That was before.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if there was...
I just, all I remember was...
Talk to the other, afterwards, I'll, I'll find out what it is you want. We got three things. I mean, there are some things that were filed, combined by the, by IDAM and the commissioners and council. And then, there's a study or plan that it's too big for paper. It's on a CD wrong, that I don't know that I've even...
But all that information, the charging of the Kitty Paxton, all that, the focus was Kitty Paxton's issue and suggestion initially by DLZ, and then it morphed into, not being an unworkable plan, basically, for the business cost. Then, it developed into the process of working with Senator Holden and IDAM, and then it finished with agreement with the city. So, it was a pretty focused issue to start.
Yeah. It was focused on the Kitty Paxton, but rather than establish a district for that limited area, the area is all the county, except for that in incorporated areas or already served by municipal sewer.
Ted?
So, basically, the whole county.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Just, I was involved in this a long, long time ago. Kevin, you were the only commissioner that was on that commission. And if you want to know the Indiana Code that establishes this, it's Indiana Code 1326. So, if you want to go and read what the state mandated at that time, it's very nebulous in many areas. It doesn't establish funding. It was mandated by that Indiana Code 1326. And I won't go into it. A lot of provisions, as far as I'm concerned, are not in line with the Constitution when it was instituted, it was forced. So, here we are.
Yep. We'll leave it at that, and we'll move on to our, I think, public hearing. Sorry. Leon, yes? Yeah, as long as we don't discuss what we had in the executive session.
No. Excuse me, what I have to discuss, and I've already talked to all of you about it one-on-one or in public RSD meetings, but I have to point back to the Wells County Sewing ordinance from 11-08. I strongly feel that that ordinance is not being enforced fairly between citizens, between individual homeowners. And then, we need to bring the city of Buckling into this. There are several sections in this ordinance that tell the Health Department exactly what rules to follow, and what individual homeowners have to do to comply with this ordinance. And as far as I know, after talking to Marlene Ho, that the old Senate rule, that homeowners have to comply with all the sections of this ordinance. But now, and I just learned about it probably six months ago or so, when it comes to section 308, we have the 300th rule, which states that if a sanitary system becomes available, and within 300 feet of the property line of a residential or business property, a direct connection shall be made to said sanitary sewage system. That, there are people in Timber Ridge, probably 14, 15 homes, that applied to this section, and that has not been enforced. I know the city is resisting that, but the city should be...
But there's one word you said in your statement. You said one thing in your statement that says the line has to be available.
If it's available, it's already up to the lift station on 116.
It's available. We don't own that line as the county. It's owned by the city.
That's right.
And the city has to make it available.
The city has made it available up to the lift station. We know it's available because there are three homes on 250 that are already tapped in. The city allowed them to tap in. But, and we've got an individual on 116 who's complying with this ordinance. He's been on Puppen Hall for several months.
Leon, are the other individuals, would the city allow them to tap in? That's my question. If there's some that are tapped in, and that line runs to that lift station?
This individual that's on Puppen Hall definitely asked the city before he could tap in. They denied.
So, then, I stop right there. So, that is not our line. We cannot enforce a line, if I'm correct.
We don't own the line.
We don't own the line. The city owns it. I think you need to take your, your, to the city. I mean, we, we feel for it. We understand. But it's not within our realm of discussion to do that. That is a city-owned line. They need to enforce it if they want to. Now, my question here also is, do you sit on their board?
Yes.
I think you need to get on board with them.
No. I'm...
Just saying.
I want to follow the Constitution.
That's great. But listen to what you're saying.
IDAM. Why is the city exempt from this ordinance when all, when everybody else has to comply with it?
Understand. I can't answer that.
Nobody else has, neither. The Indiana Constitution says that the general sandwich is not granted... The Indiana Constitution says that the General Assembly shall not grant any citizen or class of citizens privileges or immunities which upon the same terms shall not equally belong to all citizens. Right now, we have, uh, the United States is supposed to have a system where we are ruled by law. This is the law, but unfortunately, we're being ruled by men right now instead of law. The law applies to everybody in Wells County, this ordinance, not just the poor individual that forced the Pumper Hall. I realize that the city has a lot more clout than the individual homeowner does, but you're still under the same law.
Have you gone to the city with that?
Yeah, me and I did, and it was, that was before I fully understood this ordinance.
Right.
And they told us that they had to check into the possible problems with tapping. But what bothers me is that when Lancaster Elementary was built, uh, the city built a sewage line to block it, Lancaster. The homes that are along Highway one within three hundred feet were told they had to tap in because of this ordinance. It applied to them, but now it doesn't apply. And if the city didn't want to be tapping on two fifty and one sixteen, they shouldn't have built the line in the first place, because this ordinance proceeded when River Caris was built.
Well, I would suggest you follow back up with the city on that and see what they have to say. I know, that's what I'm saying, but you're, you're, it's falling on deaf ears right here, we understand where you're coming, but we don't control it. So, the only place you're gonna start that's with the city.